Yeah, well, good luck.[21.81][21.81](applause) Good evening, I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners to Order. This is our regular November 18th, 2019 meeting. Before we get started, we got a great crowd here tonight, happy to see so many smiling faces, but if you have a cell phone, now would be the time to make sure that it is silenced. Alrighty, we're gonna start our meeting with an invocation. I'm gonna ask Pastor John Marks from Covington Memorial Wesleyan Church, and that's not the right church, but he's gonna tell us what church he's from.
Yes.
In Reesville, to do the invocation, and he'll be followed by Mr. Jesse Walker with the Teen Leadership Council to do our Pledge of Allegiance. So if we would all stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's Grace Fellowship is where I'm at.
Thanks.
In Reesville. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Daniel, who was a Chief Counsel of the Two Kings stated, "Blessed be the name of God forever and ever, for wisdom and might are His, and He changes the times and the seasons. He removes leaders and raises up leaders. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding. He reveals deep and secret things, and He knows what is in the darkness, and light dwells with Him." Let us pray. Almighty God, we do thank you and praise you tonight, for you who has given this land called Rockingham County. May we always prove ourselves a people mindful of your favor, for you give wisdom and might, and you have made known your ways. I ask that you would bless this county with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure and civil manners. I ask that you would restrain all the forces that would promote violence, discord, and confusion, as well as refrain us from pride and arrogance in this leadership. Defend our liberties, preserve our unity. And Lord, you are the one who gives the spirit of wisdom, and to these who we have entrusted the authority of government, I ask that they will seek that wisdom from you, to the end that there will be peace and justice, and that obedience to your laws will be able to be a light in this county and to other counties. And Lord, in time of prosperity, may we fill our hearts with thanksgiving to you, and in times of trouble and difficulties, may we draw and trust in you through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.[189.62][189.62](applause)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[210.34][210.34](pause) Gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is approval of the November 18th, 2019 agenda. There's a couple of additions that I would like to ensure that we make. One, under New Business, that we add item number A, Carrie Spencer Scope and Budget Contract with Destination by Design as part of our Land Use Plan. Also, item B would be the introduction of our new county clerk. And then, under number 12, I'd like to ensure that we add, in addition to all the closed session statutes, add one more, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4 to discuss location or expansion of industries. Is there any other items that anybody else would like to add or delete?
So moved, Mr. Trump.
I got a motion by Commissioner Travis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose like sign. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is recognition of our Falls Citizens Academy. At this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Justin Thacker to come forward. He's gonna be the master of ceremonies. And gentlemen, I'm gonna ask you to stand down in front of the podium, and we will be some handshakers.[312.64][312.64](laughter)
So, good evening Chairman Pertle, Vice Chairman Mark Richardson, members of the Board of Commissioners, County Manager Metzler, and ladies and gentlemen. I am Justin Thacker, Deputy Finance Director of Rockingham County Government. However, this year also served as the co-chair of the Rockingham County Citizens Academy Steering Committee, along with Julie Talbert, who's the right of me. Tonight, we thank our Rockingham County Board of Commissioners for your continued support, participation, and encouragement for the Citizens Academy. This free 10-week program has helped dozens of local residents learn and better understand how Rockingham County Government operates. Since 2012, our Citizens Academy has graduated eight classes and has informed, educated, engaged, and empowered citizens with a thorough behind-the-scenes view of how county government serves its citizens. Tonight, I am proud to say that previous Citizens Academy graduates are extremely involved as civic ambassadors, elected officials, serve on county boards and commissions, and leading major nonprofits, businesses, agencies, and religious groups in Rockingham County. We have an unusual class tonight because some have already mentioned additional roles where they want to immediately serve. Please join me and Julie in congratulating a committed, concerned group of community volunteers ready to make a difference. On behalf of Julie and myself, best wishes to the Fall 2019 Citizens Academy graduates. Thanks for your continued support from previous classes led by Leanna Lawson, Barbara Bujer, and Felisa Ellington, and thanks again to the County Commissioners and Mr. Metzler for your support for Citizens Academy. And I'll turn it over to Julie.
Thank you, everyone. Tonight, what we would like to do is recognize the graduates, and we'll do that as I call their name. If you will come up and get your hands shook and a little token, and if you'll stand beside over here so we can take a photograph afterwards. And here are the graduates. Jenny Decker.[475.34][475.34](applause) Mari Carmen Garduno.[490.34][490.34](applause) Mary D. Martin.[496.12][496.12](applause) Joe Reed.[502.22][502.22](applause) Corey Scott.[508.03][508.03](applause) Marcia Simpson.[519.75][519.75](applause) Stacy Southern.[524.75][524.75](applause) We also had, oh, Brenda Cannon.[531.03][531.03](applause) We also had a few graduates that could not be here with us tonight, and that is Deborah Herbin, Rob Martin, Dylan Moore, and Wendy Trogdon. value to retain it for commercial use when a request has been brought forward to downzone it back to residential.
Got a question.
Property, aerial view of the property? And I'll move back to here so that you can see where the property is located, in case there's any speaking from the public. Do you have questions for me about the case?
Okay, Commissioner Travis.
Yeah, Carrie, um, when was it zoned commercial to begin with?
I believe this is a property that was zoned based on its use when the ordinance was adopted in 1987 and 88.
And nothing's been done on it since then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. No problem.
Any other questions for Carrie? Okay. At this point in time, I declare the public hearing open on zoning request 2019 dash zero one seven. I declare the public hearing open on zoning request zero twenty nineteen dash zero one seven. I have one person signed up to speak. Ms. Brown or Mr. Brown? You want to come forward? And you are the property owner?
I'm the wannabe property owner.
You're the wannabe property owner, I'm sorry. If you would state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Sure. I'm Ardo Ro, Eugene Brown. I currently live in South Carolina, Chesterfield, South Carolina. I would like, I just took a position with Honda down in Greensboro at the airport. I'd like to move to the area. This property is perfect for building a house and I'd like to plant some apple trees on it, too. It has been, I believe, it's been on sale since 2006 as commercial, and nobody has purchased it as of yet.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions for Mr. Brown?
I just want to welcome to the county, it becomes the county, but thanks for coming to Rockingham County.
All right, Mr. Chair, if there are no questions, let me close the hearing first. There you go. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor or against that didn't sign up? Anyone else like to speak in favor or against that didn't sign up? No one else wanting to speak? I declare the public hearing closed. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion or is there any discussion?
Now move approval, sir.
Second.
All right, I got a motion. Does your motion also include a statement and analysis of the?
It does, for consideration of 2019 dash zero one seven.
All right, I got a motion to approve twenty dash nineteen zero one seven to include statement and analysis. I got a second by Commissioner Travis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose like sign, motion carries.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay.
Next case is 2019-18, a rezoning from residential agricultural to light industrial conditional district. This property is located off of 68, just behind Stanley Grading. The land use class for this area is, it's urban transition, uh, rural transition to urban growth near the corridor of Highway 68 there. This is actually a case of a business that wants to become, wants to come into conformance with our ordinance by rezoning the use from residential business that they started on the residential property, which has grown to the point that needs to be rezoned to commercial use. The location of the property here off 68, the area in purple there is Stanley Grading's industrially zoned property. Aerial shot of the property, as you can see, it's been developed over the years. They're at the point now where they want to construct an additional building, sort of dig in and rezone. They will be subject to a site plan approval with their building permit.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Of Ms. Spencer? Okay. At this time, I declare the public hearing open. I declare the public hearing open on case number 2019 zero one eight, 2019 zero one eight. No one has signed up to speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor or against that did not sign up? Is anyone present would like to speak in favor or against that did not sign up? Send no indication, I declare the public hearing closed.
I make a motion to approve 2019 dash zero one eight with analysis and statements.
Okay, I got a motion to approve case number 2019 dash zero one eight to include analysis and a statement by Commissioner Travis. Do I have a second?
I second.
Got a second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you. We ready for you to next one.
Case 2019-21 is a request for residential protected zoning district to allow major subdivision. This case came before you earlier as a straight rezoning. It has been withdrawn, or it was, excuse me, denied and has been resubmitted for a rezoning district to a conditional, residential conditional district with a maximum of ten lots. Property is located in the rural transition land class of the land use plan. Is about 118 acres, and again, the, um, the proposal to purchase the property is to purchase and construct a major subdivision of up to 10 lots. Aerial view of the property? Are familiar with the case because you've seen the, not this particular case, but you've seen this property before under a different case. Questions?
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Spencer? Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open on case 2019 dash zero two one, 2019 dash zero two one. I declare the public hearing open. I have four people signed up to speak. I will call you in the order of what you signed up. When I call you, please come up to the podium. Give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. All right, I first would like to call Ms. Bonnie Mills. Hope I pronounced that right. If I butcher anybody's name, I'm going to apologize now, and this goes through the rest of the night. Ms. Mills, if you would, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Bonnie Mills, 8312 Patricia Drive, Stokesdale, NC. My sister and I are trying to sell our farm land to Mr. Smith, and he has been a lot of complaints that this afraid it was going to be a housing development, but he has signed a paper that he's only going to build no more than 10 houses, and he's going to build a home at the back of the farm. So it has gotten so expensive for us to maintain that land, we couldn't make enough off of it in the last 10 years to even pay the taxes. So I would, we would like very much for you to allow us to sell it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Okay, Mr. Bill Pretty?
Yes, sir.
If you'd come forward, please, and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. I'm Bill Pretty. I live at 8311 Patricia Drive in Stokesdale, North Carolina. My wife Diane and Bonnie Fay own that land at 1367 Gideon Grove Church Road. My wife's in critical care. I keep her at home. I would have brought her tonight, but it's damp and she gets pneumonia real easy, so she's not here, but her husband for 50 years is here to speak for her sake. But like Bonnie said, we have that land for sale, and Mr. Smith has signed a paper that he will not build any more than 10 houses, up to 10 houses. And we agreed that we would sell it to him, and we would very much appreciate commissioners to let us do that, to sell it to him. And I'd like to thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and speak to you. It's the first county commissioners meeting I've ever been to in my life, and I'm not saying I don't want to come back, but, but I do. I am just a little bit nervous, and I'm not that type of person, but it is a little pressure to stand here and ask you that. We would appreciate you letting us sell that property, and thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pretty.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Robert Griffin, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. Robert Griffin, 1139 Gideon Grove Church Road. My land is right beside the Prities house, or Prities land. They failed to mention that, you know, it's not going to be a subdivision, but yet, right across, right across, they just sold approximately another 100 acres and put eight to 10 houses on it. Now they want to put eight to 10, they want to put 10 houses beside me. Well, you know, build 10 houses. I got 10 hocks coming in about a month, and if they want to spend 250,000 on a house, they can be next to a hawk farm. I made that decision. Why can't Rockingham County do something like Guilford County as far as whales building one central whale for all these houses to service off of? I understand that's done in Guilford County and not in Rockingham County. It's, it's just to the point, you know, they're going to build all these houses, and there's no, the whales are going five, six, 700 feet deep. And Mr. Smith, where's Mr. Smith? He's not here to answer questions. We were told in Williamsburg that he was supposed to supply y'all with a form of how many, how the houses are going to look. He's yet to appear in the last two meetings. If he cared about these houses, why is he not here? And I feel for the Prities. I understand that they're, they're getting old, but why, I know plenty of farmers that's got plenty of money. They haven't, they hadn't offered them the houses, they hadn't offered them the land to buy so they could farm on it. It has been farmed in the last few years. You know, they do have to rotate their, rotate the crops, so it hasn't been every year, it's like every other year. But, you know, we're just sick of, sick of losing the farmland. Ellisboro is a farmland community, and, you know, it's not, it's, you build 70 houses down here and 20 houses up here, it's, it's no longer going to be a farmland community. Mr. Richardson, he won't even have to be an agricultural commissioner because he's not going to have to worry about no land. I'm just saying, you know, consider the farm area, consider these whales, consider doing something like Guilford County. You can run, run a pipe from Rockingham County to, to, over to Ellisboro off Gideon Grove Road. You can run, you can run a pipe that far. So, you know, thank you, thank you for your time, and I'm, and I don't know how many hard farms is in Eden, but it's getting ready to be one. I mean, excuse me, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Pearl, not Eden, I lived in Eden for 30 years.
I know you did.
Ellisboro. It's getting ready to be one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. The next person signed up is Ms. Dawn Stone. If you'll come forward, Ms. Stone, give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes, okay?
Okay. I'm Dawn Stone, 290 Patricia Lane, Stokesdale. I'm speaking on behalf of James Smith. He called me today and asked me to apologize that he couldn't be here tonight. His daughter had surgery, so he's at the hospital with her. He did want me to reiterate that he has put limitations on the 118 acres and agreed to only build 10 or less homes, one of those being his own, which he wants to build on the back and be nestled back on the back of this 118 acres. And he just feels like that, he wants to be a good neighbor, and he just wanted me to express that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Thank you. Gentlemen, that is all that have signed up to speak. Is there anybody that didn't sign up that would like to speak in favor or against? Anyone that didn't sign up like to speak in favor or against? That being said, I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, gentlemen, I'll, is there any comments or any more questions for Ms. Spencer? Discussion?
I think I just need to verify something or clarify something, and Ms. Stone can, can verify this, but when this was on the agenda, a couple of months ago, the potential closing was in our office, and now that has been moved to another law firm. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I no longer have a conflict on this.
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
I, I just have a comment. You know, anytime something like this happens, it's kind of hard, if not impossible, to make everybody happy, and I understand the concerns, and for me personally, being friends with everybody that's spoken tonight, but I do applaud Mr. James for being cooperative. It's not exactly what we wanted, Mr. Griffin, but it's, it's a lot better than it could have been, if you would. And so I admire folks taking the concerns of people that were against it into consideration as they reap it. And with that, I will move approval of 2019 dash zero two one, including the assessments and statements.
All right, I have a motion to approve dash 2019 dash zero one to include a statement and analysis. Is there, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
I got a second one by Commissioner Hall. The motion was made by Commissioner Richardson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the request, say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries. Okay, Carrie, you're up again.
This next case, 2019-16, is located at the intersection of US 220 and Williams Road. On the north side of Williams Road, the parcel actually goes on both sides of Williams Road. This request is for the three and a half acre portion on the north side of that, of that road. Property is located in the economic development land class, the, which runs along 220, Highway 220. Lands outside of developed and urban transition areas where substantial capital investments are strongly encouraged to create new jobs and build a county tax base. There, you see the property is located at that northeast corner of the intersection of Williams Road and 220. Aerial view of the property. The remainder of the parcel on the south side of Williams Road, you can see, but this request is just for the parcel, the portion of the parcel on the north side. You have in your packet a list of permitted uses that would be allowed should the zoning pass.
Okay.
Any questions of?
Is there any questions of Ms. Spencer? No questions? Okay. At this time, I declare the public hearing open. I declare the public hearing open on case number 2019 dash zero one six, 2019 dash zero one six. I have three people signed up to speak. I'm going to ask Mr. Randy Brown to come forward, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Randy Brown. Live on Bethesda Church Road in Roughing, North Carolina. I came hoping to seek approval as a voice for Wilson Property and Skywalker Roofing, but I'm afraid that that probably will not be necessary because with me tonight I have Mr. Luke Wilson, who owns both. So I was here to answer questions and offer rebuttal, but he can do so. So I don't have anything other than a request for approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Well, the next person signed up to speak is Mr. Luke Wilson. Luke, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
All right. Luke Wilson, 257 Ram Loop. Stokesdale is my business address, and I have to agree with this nice gentleman back here just spoke a while ago, this makes me nervous. This ain't what I do. But we're just, you know, where we're at on Ram Loop, we're out of space. We built it a few years ago, and just keep growing and growing and don't know, you know, we're just out of room, and we're landlocked there, so when this came up for sale, we knew this was a good location for us. Anybody that knows us know that we take a lot of pride in the things we do, and we would do the same there, you know? We would take care of the land and have a beautiful place and offer a lot of good jobs to the community.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
All righty. Mr. William Lingle, if you'll come forward, give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. My name's William Lingle. I'm 981 Williams Road in Madison, North Carolina. I'm the piece of property directly to the east of the property that's in question of being turned and transitioned. I'm obviously against it. It's my property right against it, about to have light industrial use beside it, beside a residential piece of property. According to the permit request and everything from him, there's no, what's the term of it? No conditions, all completely valid for whatever he wants to do. My concern is not so much what he wishes to do, but who comes after him? He, Duke Power can put a plant in light industrial. I can have a chemical plant beside my house eventually. I know his business is growing. Three, four years down the road, what happens when he's got to build a new plant and go somewhere else? With no conditions, there's no protection for our property values around it. That's all I got to say. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All righty. That is all that signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that, that did not sign up that would like to speak in favor or against case number 2019 dash zero one six? Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against case number zero, case number 2019 zero one six? No one acknowledging? I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, gentlemen, any discussion?
I got some questions.
All righty, Commissioner Travis?
Carrie, please. Mr. Lingle, where exactly is your property located on the map that, right there you see?
It's here, oh, I'm sorry, right here to the?
I mean, where's his property?
Right.
A little small, little box?
Tight, yeah, that's the small property.
The question I have, Carrie, is with this zoning request, is there any buffering that's going to be taking place to go against a residential side of that?
Yes, when, before this property is developed, it'll be subject to the approval of a site plan that will be subject to standards for what we call site design and landscaping requirements for non-residential zoning districts.
Okay, so on all, on all, well, both sides of that property, you're going to have buffering? Is it residential on the north side of that, too?
Yes, there'll actually be buffers on all four sides. There'll be street buffer requirements on the street sides, and the, the maximum density visual barrier buffer will be required on the north and east sides and on the property.
Is there going to be a light buffering?
There will be.
Lights at night will be shining on new people's properties?
We have, we don't have specific light standards in this portion of the ordinance, but we have downward, downward pointing, no trespass light standards in other parts of the ordinance that I will?
So there will be no direct light going on in somebody's house?
Which I will strongly encourage. I can't require that as part of these standards, but they will be strongly encouraged.
Okay, and I guess we don't know exactly where the entrance of this property is going to be?
We don't, but it's likely that the, the driveway will be off of Williams Road because of the, the future upgrade of Highway 220 to an interstate.
Right.
He'll have to get a driveway permit from NCDOT, and I believe they've had those discussions, and then it's likely it'll be?
And DOT will make a decision whether turning lanes in place there or not?
That's correct.
Okay, that's why, I just want to get that on record so people understand it.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, I appreciate, you know, you growing, I really do, and I hope you've talked to our economic development about your growing, because we probably could help a little bit incentive wise, but I understand Mr. Lingle's concerns, too, you know? He's been around residential, you know, the whole time. I hope it satisfies you, Mr. Lingle, that they put buffering there where you won't see the property, you won't see the lighting. I want to try to do everything I can to protect your rights, too. I understand that, but I appreciate all of it.
My concern for Mr. Wilson is just who comes after him.
Right, and?
He can do everything he can to keep you pretty.
Right.
I just don't believe he comes after him when he, when he has to lock up another bigger place, hopefully it's Skywalker.
Right.
I can comment on the?
Carrie, I think, I think you can address that. I think we have things in place to address that, too, sir. Go ahead, Carrie.
Any, any change of, you, the, the site design standards will go with the site. The only thing that would allow less intensive barriers would be less intensive uses.
Right.
So those, those site standards will run with the, with the property as long as it's in use, in whatever use it is.
Okay, that's all I got. I appreciate it, Ms. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Hall?
Yes, my question's for you as well, Carrie. What is the percentage buildable on that site for non-pervious surfaces?
The site is not in the watershed.
Okay.
So there won't be, there won't be that, there isn't a?
Restrictions on that.
Correct.
Okay.
But the future I-73 could impact that somewhat, too?
Absolutely, well, and he'll have, I know that, I know that the applicant's already spoken to NCDOT, excuse me, to make sure that they're not going to be, that they've built far enough back from where the future right of way is going to be.
That's right.
Right.
I see there won't be no access on that 73.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, any other, any other questions? All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion for 2019 dash zero one six, approval for, and include analysis and statements involved.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. I have a motion to approve case number 2019 dash zero one six to include statement and analysis. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
I got a second by Commissioner Hall. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Spencer, you're almost there.
Actually, Mr. Lingle will be reviewing the site design as part of the, as part of the, the technical review process.
Oh, for the last case?
Yeah, yeah, so he'll have the opportunity to make sure that it's safe and fire access is adequate. The last case that you have before you tonight is a, excuse me, 2019-15. This is a request from residential agricultural to rural commercial. We haven't had too many rural commercial requests. This is a, the least intense zoning district that we have that allows uses very similar in nature to, and impact to those that are allowed in the, excuse me, in the agricultural, residential agricultural district. This property is located in the rural land class with? with neighborhood commercial centers adjacent to collector streets or local streets. That's actually not an appropriate, I think the more appropriate characteristic here is where residential development is grouped to existing neighborhoods and cross-road community settlements where it will occur in similar, excuse me, neighborhoods and settlements with limited commercial development with an emphasis on mixed use. The property is located, the colors aren't that great. You see the property located right here. I'm remembering the acreage size of this property is about five and a half acres, 5.7 acres near the intersection with Christopher Road. An aerial view of the property. The applicant is here with an intent to build a specific use on the property, but as you know, this is a straight zoning with all the uses in the rural commercial district allowed. I will point out for, for any case like this, especially in a non-residential case, you're comparing a potential use with the potential allowed uses around it. Not only those that are allowed now, but those that might be permitted by right around it in the agricultural zoning districts. Are there questions?
Ms. Chairman. I do have a question. Under Point 8, Staff Findings and Recommendation, the, your third statement says this request is for conditional zoning with use conditions offered by the applicant.
That is a mistake. This was, this did not come in as a conditional zoning district. I'm glad that you pointed that out in the staff report. The application is correct and is for a straight rezoning, yes.
Okay. The case is, can you give me the case number again? Okay. All right, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis.
Carrie, go back to the map that shows the properties around it. Is residential agriculture all the way around them, right?
That's correct.
And he didn't give no, I guess he can't ask specific use.
Still have the uses under there. Is that the case?
And you got the list of what's authorized with rural and commercial?
That's correct.
Can you show that?
I don't have it on...
Or can you read what?
I can read it, certainly I can read it. I don't have it to project.
Hold on, he'll get it for me.
The guy is really small, but it's in the back.
I have it in the, yeah. Do you not have it in your packet?
I probably do, but...
Okay.
Let me see. Thank you. That's all I got right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? For Ms. Spencer? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Richardson.
Ms. Spencer, it seems to be a fairly large plot of land for the purpose intended, and I'm just comparing it to other electrical shops. I'm thinking there's a high potential that Mr. Vi may want to sell part of this property. It is my understanding that if he were to sell part of this property, the zoning would go with it, and all 20 of these potential uses would be up for grabs. Is that correct?
That is correct. All of them, any development of the property, as we stated before, would be subject to site standards, site development standards, and one of the standards in this zoning district is a maximum square footage of 3,000 for retail use for a building size. I think that's the only, besides standards for all non-residential, that's the only limiting one.
Yeah, did Mr. Vi give you an indication of what sort of building he intended to...
He, he has stated that he was going to put up an office building and a storage facility for the equipment that he stores to, to do electric work off-site. Again, this is conjecture based on what he has, is his stated intent, and those details will be set in stone, as it were, when he comes in for site plan design.
Did he indicate verbally whether it was going to be straw, stick, or bricks?
He did not.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Spencer?
There will be, it will be subject to the design standards that will be either straw, stick, or bricks rather than vinyl or metal.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Hall.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, Carrie. Again, as we talked about in the last case, can you describe any kind of screening that will be required?
So, screening will be based on the use, again, the specific use that he's, that he is requiring, and based on the surrounding parcels. If, if indeed he is building a, a building, a storage area, and any hidden outdoor storage, he'll have to use the most intense, highest visible barrier, highly invisible landscape barrier on all sides, as well as a street scape, a street yard.
But should he change what he's wanting to do? He'd have to present plans, and he'd have to present a site plan, and that would still be subject to approval, correct?
That's correct.
Next question is water runoff. I think, I remember at one of the planning meetings, that was brought up. Are there restrictions regarding that for him?
If he's grading higher, more than an acre, he'll definitely have to get a grading permit from DEQ with sedimentation control devices or sedimentation control in place, whether it's, whether it's a device or temporary traps, traps for the water to runoff. If less than an acre, then he'll be subject to, there are sedimentation control, erosion control specifications in place for construction of any kind that he'll have to observe, and he'll basically have to stabilize the site to the way it was before, before it was built.
Okay. And then, of course, I mentioned site approval. I guess the other thing is, looking at the permitted uses, those 19 uses, I think one of the concerns has been like mechanic shop, boat maintenance shops, or outdoor storage. Is that an approved use in this district?
I gave, I gave it away.
Yeah, it is. It's approved for that.
And any of those, especially outdoor storage, has very specific standards that basically hide outdoor storage from view.
I just didn't see it specifically mentioned as part of the private and public office space.
I don't...
Is that true?
I gave my list of permitted uses away.
All right.
Office spaces and the storage that Charlie's talking about are compatible.
That's what I thought. Any kind of outdoor storage as an associated use to some other principal use, but not as a, not as a principal use on its own. The other uses are potentially intense, I mean, truck, truck and rail transport, but all of them are in the service of agricultural products, yeah. So, there it is, the retail shop's not exceeding 3,000. Sawmill's office is private and public. The, any outdoor storage which he's intended to, again, would just be accessory, like, excuse me, like a shed is to a house. It would be an accessory to the, to the use and would be subject to site plan standards to hide it.
So, I guess my question is, let's assume something were happening down the road, they wanted to convert this to a, to a boat storage or to a mechanic shop for recreational boats or...
Not unless it's hydroponic farming that the boats were necessary for, but it all in support of agricultural uses. So, no, a boat storage would not be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rich.
Just a question on you on that, Carrie. There's a boat storage maintenance facility within a quarter mile of this thing that was originally zoned urban commercial, excuse me, rural commercial, and it started out as a nursery, and it's now a boat.
Yep.
Why come that is?
That could not, I think that's Mr. Malone's property.
That what?
Mr. Malone, Tom Malone's property, I think is what you're talking about, the boat storage.
It was Mr. Jeffrey, Jerry Helfrich before it was Mr. Malone's.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's properly zoned now for that use.
Because it was part of the list of original zoning.
Yeah, it's current, current zoning is...
Are you saying they had to come back and rezone it?
I don't have that case in front of me, but I know... Pardon?
I don't think they did. I think it was part of that original rezoning. That's why they switched over.
And allowed use in the original zoning.
I'm not trying to grill you on this, I'm just trying to get the facts right.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't, you feel that it was zoned rural commercial? I don't want to oppose you either. I don't know that it is rural commercial.
Well, I would tell you, you'd have a nursery on it for a couple, three days, and it doesn't now.
Nursery isn't, isn't even rural commercial. Actually, nursery tends more toward an industrial type zoning district.
It's actually, that house, property in red, ain't it?
Anyway...
What, a plant nursery is industrial? Light industrial.
Oh, excuse me, okay. Then I'm not as familiar with that property, thank you. No, well, in a nursery with nursery trucks, piles of pine and mulch and that sort of thing, a large-scale nursery operation can be more industrial, yes. It depends on the intensity.
Seems pretty agricultural to me.
Any other question?
It's all in the definition.
Okay, gentlemen, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for rezoning case 2019-015, 2019-015. I declare the public hearing open. We have two people that have signed up to speak. I'm going to ask them to speak in the order that they signed up. The first is Mr. Ray Brown. Mr. Brown, if you'll come forward, give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Three minutes is not enough, but my name is Raymond Brown, 4414 Ellisboro Road, Stokesdale. Regarding the boat shop that is currently there, it was rezoned to put the nursery in by Mr. Helfrich's, part of his agricultural business. My biggest concern about this project is rezoning it to RC rather than L1 or something else without some kind of restriction, because it, the property is 5.75 acres, and Mr. Vi has already said that he's going to tear the house down on that side of the property and put a building there and put a storage behind it, which leaves wide open, not being said out loud, to sell half of it. I mean, it's two and a half acres for, for via electric substitute, if you will, or another two and a half acres for something else. And if you zone it to RC without any restrictions, who knows what they can get? I'd like to see a L1 zoning with restrictions, or at least an RC with specific restrictions, because if you zone it RC, who knows what can happen, just like the nursery to a boat shop. And I have friends who live next to that boat shop, and they're irritated by motor testing in the middle of the night. So, that's what happens when you do that. And let me just point, you got a portable mic? Anyway, let me just point something out. This red square is where the current boat shop is. This is all agricultural, this is all J&amp;J tree farms, this is J&amp;J tree farms through here, this is where the proposed property is. I live here. We're putting a million-dollar house in right here. We're building another house. They have two houses in just location. And houses all interior. And just be careful what you zone it for, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Milton Vi, if you'll come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Milton Vi, 297 Yard Arm, Stokesdale, North Carolina. And I'm here just to get this rezoned because I'm putting up a business that's going to be maybe a four to 5,000 square foot office front with a metal building attached, and that's for storing materials in our day-to-day business. All our businesses are off-site, that's just strictly probably four or five people work there at the most. It will be contained, it's all our equipment, our own jobs, and it'll be very low-keyed. So, I mean, it's real simple.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that would like to speak in favor or against? Anyone else that didn't sign up that would like to speak in favor or against?
Roxanne Griffin, 108 South Wilson Street in Madison. I'd like to encourage you to consider some kind of noise restrictions on this property so that if there is a partial sale of the property or a future sale to some other business, that the residents in that area would be protected from noise. I understand that you have buffers for site, so please consider noise level a consideration, especially if there's a potential for putting in a sawmill or something of that type. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll wait till you close it, and then I'll ask questions.
Is anyone else like to speak in favor or against? Anyone else like to speak in favor or against? He didn't use all your three minutes, so come on, we'll give you another minute. Mr. Vi, state your name again for the record.
Milton, Milton Vi. Not planning on a sawmill, we're planning on being there for a long time. Also, I'm not planning on selling part of the land. We could, we could shift that office to right in the middle of the property, so it can't be sold. It's going to be a brick office building, and I do have a photograph of what kind of office it would be in the, in the front. So, it's going to be nice.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Go, Commissioner Travis.
Mr. Vi, just hold on a second. Let me ask you, are, are you willing to maybe change your request to a condition so we can put conditions on it, or you want it to be straight?
Right now, I want it to be just like we have it, but I would consider the conditions.
I mean, I think your neighbors, that's probably all they were asking is to, you know, I know you want to be a good neighbor, and I want to see your business grow, maybe get bigger. You know, it's constantly hard to make everybody happy, I understand that, but, you know, are you willing to look, maybe look at this and add some conditions where it'll make your neighbors feel a little bit better than...
That's possible. And noise is not a problem with us, and we're not tuning motors at all times in the night, so...
I understand. You got five or six o'clock, you're gone, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor or against? Anyone else? No one acknowledging, I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, gentlemen, I'll open it up for discussion.
Ask Carrie a question.
Carrie? Come back up to the mic.
I don't know the timeframe Mr. Vi is, is trying to get, but can you explain if we deny this tonight and we come back with some kind of conditions on it, what's the timeframe that he may be looking at? He might be in a hurry to get his business up and running, you know, I don't know, so...
I don't know either. He's likely to have a contract contingent upon a timeline, whether he could change that or not, I don't know. It would be fair for him to understand, too, that this would be a new zoning case with a new fee. It would be fair for him to understand, too, that this would be a new zoning case with a new fee and a new application, excuse me, a new, a different, a different-
I mean, what commissioners, I don't know if they can waive that or not, but, I mean, I appreciate him willing to work with the residents around it, and I understand the situation of, I'm just trying to get an idea.
January, January, February, probably January or February.
No, I don't think, we can go faster than that, can't we?
If we, it's about this, it's about the holidays, and December only has one commissioners' meeting. He didn't make the deadline for me to get him to a planning board meeting in November, even if I, even if I could because of deadline, because of advertising.
What's your timeframe?
As soon as possible.
I'd like to just offer a few, a few points to you, if that's okay. Other restrictions that the zoning will put on the property and lot dimensions, that sort of thing. Rural commercial zoning does have a minimum lot size of an acre. So anything, anything that would, that would be divided would be, would have to be larger than an acre. It couldn't be a sort of planned business development, wouldn't be allowed in that district. Something intense with buildings close together, zero-lot lines, sort of thing, wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed. Trying to think of the other, other things that came up. Noise ordinances would come into play, of course, as far as noise. Our nuisance ordinances would come into play.
And buffering and all that, too, comes into play.
Yeah.
Comes in with the site plan.
And absolutely, and the requirement for a site plan. And architectural standards, we cannot impose architectural standards based on our design guidelines.
Carrie, there's been some talk about that square, a couple of tracks above this one. This request is for rural commercial. The red is highway commercial.
Highway commercial, yeah, I just, I was sitting and realizing that, looking it up at the boat storage.
Yeah, not disputing that at some point in time it was zoned rural commercial, but at some point it became highway commercial somehow.
That's correct.
Should have been through a request. And maybe you can get that information to the folks that have asked about it.
Research it, yes.
But that is a different zoning classification than what we're talking about.
Yes, sir, and a much higher intensity, which would, that zoning district would allow a boat, boat storage facility, whereas this one would not.
Right. Okay.
Any further discussion?
I have one question. Carrie, did you suggest to Mr. Vi that this be done rather than a general rezoning, a conditional rezoning?
During our conversations, we discussed it, but I'm, it's ultimately a property owner or a property applicant's-
I'll just check and see if he knew all his options.
Yes, he knew his options.
And staff's recommendation was what?
My recommendation was to approve the district based on the low intensity of the district itself, based upon the other like metal buildings and ag buildings in the area. All the things that were described, to me, felt like they were in keeping. I could-
This fits with our current plan, correct?
With our, it definitely fits with our current land use plan.
And the planning board result was what?
Theirs was a unanimous recommendation to pass the case, to pass, to recommendation to rezonate.
Motion to approve with statements and analysis.
I got a motion by Commissioner Berger to approve case number 2019-015 to include statement and analysis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I got a second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving case number 2019-015, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, I think it was a four to one vote. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Okay. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Lance Metzler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. We're requesting that you all reclassify two positions and reclassify Assistant Director to a marketing position and P.O.R. manager and create this position. Lee, a senior role became on February the 5th, so she really didn't have a chance to get to know her staff and their strengths and roles in play. So, and she also didn't know that our Deputy Director is now going to take a role in the state. So I told her that when she got here, that she needed to have an organization that she feels comfortable operating with. So what you have in front of you is a recommendation to eliminate the Deputy Economic Product Director position and to create a marketing slash public relations manager. This will reduce the pay rates from a pay rate of 25 to a 22. Reclassify the program support specialists to an existing industry manager. This would implement the management of business retention, attraction, expansion efforts. Reclassify the administrative assistant I to administrative II position. This will add additional responsibilities for project management, commercial retail outreach, and small business management. This reorganization will allow us to reduce the salary and benefits by roughly $2,500. But we also already are contracting out for marketing services, if not currently. So this would, the total budget for that, I think, is $48,000, and we would greatly reduce that. There would still be supplies for, or materials for marketing, but greatly reduce that now as well. And I understand that we've talked about this before, about waiting to the budget process to add additional staff. This won't be adding additional staff, this is just reclassifying the position over there, and we're seeking your approval.
Okay, gentlemen, is there any questions of Lance? And I see that he still has Economic Development Director here. Is there any questions of Lance, or is there any question of Ms. Cochran? Question?
I think this is something that should be brought up during the budget process. I understand Lee, her arrival was timed such that she was, I guess, disadvantaged to bring it up during that time. But I also understand, and I don't know if the exact figure was pointed out as far as the total savings, as far as for this fiscal year, and what is that?
The amount that we have budgeted for marketing is 48,000. I'm not sure exactly how much we've spent so far, but the amount for the salary in the position would be $2,500. It would be reduced by three pay rates.
Okay, but for the public, how much is that?
So for this fiscal year, it would be a $24,000 savings. We've already saved money off of just the salary that was vacated when our Deputy Director left in May. And then moving forward, it would be about a $50,000 a year savings, because that 48,000, we're paying $48,000 right now for our part-time marketing and PR person that we're contracting out, and this would be bringing someone on full-time and still saving money. So we're working to do more with less within the office.
Right. So I certainly appreciate at any time when departments are able to restructure and save us money. But it certainly, the ideal time is during the budget time, but anytime you save money, that's great. I'd also like to see some sort of examination of what we're doing for marketing and public information. And as far as overall, because we're funding, partly with federal dollars in one position, but either directly or indirectly for other positions for marketing and public information through different departments with the county. So I would, I would hope when we get back to the budget process that we have some recommendation or plan to best utilize all of our resources. Plus, we've got the PEG channel coming, coming forward. Number of public information things that hopefully we can look at and so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Berger.
I make a motion for approval.
I got a motion for approval, and do I have a second? Second. Is there any other discussion? I'll just say that I echo what Commissioner Berger said. I think I've talked to everybody here at some point in time about the timing. This is, I think it's the third time we've talked about positions during the course of the year. And I think my conversations with all members of this board, we prefer to do that in the, during our budget hearings versus during the middle of the year. But I do applaud the county staff recognizing a look at time to, that they can be a steward of the tax dollar. And so that trumps my budget, time, timing, so thank you. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. New business again. Gentlemen, we added one. You'll look at new business under 10. I guess we're going to call it 10A. This has approved the scope and budget for the contract with a destination by design for the update of the land use plan in UDO. This request will allow the board chair to sign the contract upon the legal review of the contract to the satisfaction of the attorney. Lance, you want to take, address this, or do you want Carrie to address it?
Can I ask Carrie if she'd take the lead on this, if you don't mind?
I don't mind.
I want to stay, stay up here. Yeah, timing, timing isn't ideal here either. As you know, we're, we went out for a new request for qualifications for a consulting firm to lead us through the update of the land use plan and the unified development ordinance. We were very pleased by the proposal that we received from the firm Destination by Design. And after several scoping discussions, a meeting with the advisory board, and a meeting with staff and a couple of commissioner representatives, this is the scope of work and contract that I'd like very much for you to approve tonight. I've also, did Pam pass out this multicolored CAMP chart? It's, it's, it's key because this is this consultant's way of being able to keep us on a fairly accelerated, accelerated time schedule where he's performing a lot of the work concurrently. So when you're approving the scope of work, this will be, is not part of the contract, but it will be how he plans to carry out the scope.
Did you also mention the increase, the budget amendment?
Yes, this is an increase in budget of $120,500 from the- current amount, which is about $100,000 greater than the original contract, about $100,000 difference between the two contracts, based on the expenditure we have had already.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Spencer? Any comments? I just want to thank everything that you and your committee has done to address this issue. As you know, this is our land use plan, updating our land use plan and our Uniform Development Ordinance is a, it's been a priority of this board, and it's something that's, we were, the county was in dire need of.
And I, I have to mention Lee's partnership in this, too. She's, she's become a really great teammate in making this process go forward, so we'll be doing, we'll be working on it together.
I appreciate the two departments collaborating and making something happen. All right, gentlemen, is there any questions? Any more questions concerning this of Carrie or Mr. Metzler?
Need one motion or two?
Well, we're going to need two motions, I think. We need one for the budget and one for the move forward with the contract. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I would break it up into two motions.
All right, well, let's start with the budget amendment. I need a motion to amend the budget, add 100, increase professional services under the line item that's presented to you by decreasing the fund balance of $120,500. Need that in the form of a motion. I got a motion by Commissioner Berger. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. The next motion I will need would be to approve the contract, approve the chair signing the contract upon satisfaction of the county attorney. And I would need it like that, so somebody would make that motion.
So moved.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, a second by Charlie Hall, Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number two on the new business is Ms., introduction of our, our new clerk to the board. Lance, would you like to do that, or would you like me to do that? Okay. Jennifer, if you'll stand up, I'll introduce you to Ms. Jennifer Woods. She'll be starting with us, I think it's on December the 2nd with the county. We selected Jennifer out of a great applicant pool. She will be joining us as the new clerk to the board. She comes to us from Eden, where she's held various positions. She's a recent graduate of Clerk School, I believe. She's also a graduate of UNCG and an Eden resident, and she's a local. So we join me and welcome Ms. Jennifer Woods to the Rockingham County team. Thank you very much. All right, do I have any other comments on that? All right, Commissioner comments. I'll start with Craig, Commissioner Travers.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say to Lee and your staff, I know you came on in February. I appreciate everything you've done since you've been here. You've done a super job, and I appreciate you looking at your organization and making changes. I kind of like that. You come in and take charge, look at and see what's problems and fix it. That's what I like. And you have to, you know, really give props to your county manager. You know, we hired him to make them decisions. I really don't know why it came before us, because that's what we hired him to do. So, but I really appreciate you having a county manager like him to back you up out there. Thank you, Lee.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, thanks to everybody that came tonight. Special congratulations to the Citizens Academy. I'm taking particular note of Ms. Mary Martin, who brought good humor from Madison, and congratulations to her on her award. I want to take a second to address Mr. Vi. The Vies in this county have been good citizens and businessmen doing electrical business for I don't know how many years, but a long time, Milton, and I certainly appreciated your dad. And I just wanted to clear here that I admire what Milton's company is doing, and it's pretty inoffensive. My complaint with it before was just the potential to allow something different that was unanticipated to get in there. But good luck on your business there, Mr. Vi. I hope it all works out well, and I'm sure you'll hear from your folks around you there with words of encouragement. Thanksgiving coming up, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Would also like to encourage folks to take a particular note of safety during the Thanksgiving holiday. During Halloween, we had a citizen, a young kid, that inadvertently got in the road and was killed. A very sad situation. And the weather's beginning to turn cold, and we need to be aware of our senior citizens and those folks vulnerable to that sort of hypothermia and so forth. That said, let's all have a good Thanksgiving, and parade season is upon us. Wentworth, Madison, Mayodan. Wentworth, Madison, Mayodan, two over in Eden, Regisville, Stoneville's having one, so a chance for us all to get out and see our citizens and celebrate the holiday season, but also a good chance to get in the road. So let's watch our youngsters when we go to the parade.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Let's go with Commissioner Burger next.
Thank y'all for coming out, I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to come and keep tabs of what's going on in your community. Also want to congratulate Citizens Academy, ladies and gentlemen that devoted their time to learn a little bit more about the county, certainly welcome Jennifer, and certainly don't want to forget who's training her there, and we certainly appreciate Pam for filling in during this time, and I know we'll also see Pam at the December meeting, and so we're certainly glad to have such, such knowledge and experience to, to help show you some of the ropes, so thank both of y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner Burger. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'd like to appreciate everyone for coming out tonight as well. Tonight seems to be planning board night, so I'd really like to thank the planning board for all the work that they do. They meet generally once a month, sometimes twice, and they really have to go through analysis and understand the, the requirements and such for their recommendations to us, so I'd like to appreciate the work that that board does for the, for the county. Congratulations to the Citizens Academy graduates, it was great to see those folks tonight getting involved and becoming leaders in the community, even more so than they are currently. Those who spoke tonight for and against the different things, thank you for working through that nervousness, I'll say, to get up here and state your opinion, that's very important, because we, we need to hear both sides of, of all these issues. Again, Pam, thank you for stepping into this role and helping us out during this time. Jennifer, welcome, it's good to have you on board, we look forward to your service as well. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done, have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I too would like to thank the Citizens Academy and Justin and for all the work that was done with, with that group of citizens, being involved in your government, it's very important because we work for you. I'd like to thank Pam, welcome Jennifer, but thank you, Pam. Pam is, is just an asset to this community, to this county, and to this board, her willingness to step in was just, you know, just the type of person she is, she stepped up, we thank you very much. And Jennifer, you got some big shoes to fill, but I know you do a great job. And I just want to share with you too that a young man passed away yesterday unexpectedly, Travis Sigmund. Travis is from Rockingham County, but he was a US Army veteran, remember the 82nd Airborne, and he was seriously wounded and received a Purple Heart, but he was wounded over in Iraq, and he come back to our community, and he passed away, like I said, unexpectedly yesterday, and for those that had an opportunity to know Travis, he was a good person, who, who sacrificed a lot, not just for this community, but for this country. And so if you would, keep his parents, Larry and Carolyn, in your thoughts and prayers as they go through this difficult time, and, but anyway. With that being said, gentlemen, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. I would ask that somebody give me a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A1, approved closed session minutes, 143-3181183 to consult with the county attorney, 143-31811A5 to instruct a negotiating instrument, or agents, I'm sorry, 143-31811 to discuss personnel, and 143-31811A4 for location or expansion of industry. We shouldn't have been here but a minute or two. So I need a motion and a second. I think when we do return from our closed session, we may have to take a couple of actions, so I want to share that with you too. So gentlemen, with that being said, I sure would entertain a motion without having to repeat that.
So moved.
I got a motion by Commissioner Travis, a second by Commissioner Hall, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I call the meeting back to order, we've ended up, come out of closed session. I need a motion on the county manager's recommended solution for the building inspector reclassification, and also that the building classification, the solution that he, that we make be entered into the minutes as if it was read. Does that satisfy you, Mr. Attorney?
That is, that is fine.
All right, I've got that motion from Commissioner Travis, do I have a second? You do. I got a second by Commissioner Richardson. Lance, can you just give us a little bit of background on this?
Yeah, basically, right now, we have a building inspectors, excuse me, building inspectors, in the, in the pay plan, it's building inspector one through a chief building inspector, I want to eliminate those positions and, and have one building inspector classification, and the way they would see increases either in their salary or their position would be through gaining certifications in, in their trades, in this building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, and we base this off of several different agencies throughout the North Carolina.
Is everybody satisfied with that synopsis?
Do you need to collude the salary?
Anybody want to hear the status?
No, it's included in the memorandum, right?
Yes, be included into the minutes. Any further discussion? I got a motion, I have a second, no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Yeah, in the, in the, in discussions, you all had mentioned that we look at doing, having the building inspector at a, at 75?
$1,000, yes.
Yes, so that, because my memo is only 71183.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you corrected. All right, we're gonna amend the motion.
I thought he amended his memo.
I thought you amended your motion in the closed session.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we.
Okay, well, that's addressed, okay.
Yeah, we addressed it, but thank you.
Let's just cover, I'm in my motion, let's go ahead and motion.
Yeah, we directed him to do it in closed session. All right, I motion to adjourn, I had Commissioner Travis, do I have a second?
Charlie, second.
Commissioner Hall, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Good night, gentlemen.
Good night, gentlemen.